Good evening, everyone. Let me welcome you to the Burke County Board of Commissioners' special meeting for Wednesday, January the 15th, 2020. Madam Clerk, the Vice Chair is not here today, but all the remaining Commissioners are here along with the County Attorney, Deputy County Attorney, and Chief Finance Officer. And that's it. Yeah. All right, gentlemen, in front of you, you have the agenda for the day's special meeting. All entertaining motion to approve?
Some moves, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, seek to find by raising the right hand. Madam Clerk, that will be four to zero. Our items for discussion today is concerning a project entitled "The Nest: A Public-Private Partnership for Wedding and Conference Venue at Fontiflora County Park," and that will be presented by Scott Carpenter, Deputy County Manager and Planning Director. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks so much for setting up this meeting. I'm going to do a brief summary, and then I'll go into a little more detail on what each of the parties is asking or expecting. And then Isaac Hoff will be doing a short PowerPoint presentation, and then we'll open it up to any questions, and we'll try to answer that. So let me get started. So over the past three years, community development has been looking for a partner to bring in to the county park area on our Fontiflora County Park in order to do something through a public-private partnership agreement. And we've been looking for somebody to do yurts or treehouses or something like that, as well as a venue. Early on, we had somebody come from Nana Hill Outdoor Center. We had the Chief Executive Officer come, but we were a little bit early then in trying to get an investor into the county park land. There was no road end. The trail wasn't built. It was quite rough, and for some reason, he just couldn't quite see the vision at that time. But since that time, we've progressed a long way. And as you know, we have a trail through the park. We have about 20 miles on the ground. We're continuing to work towards coming in here to Morganton. We're also heading out towards McDowell and Marion with the trail as well, and those plans are well underway. So I had met and had discussions with a few people through the years about investing in yurts and that type of thing. And one of the things that's come up is it's very expensive to do a project at the lake. First, you have to get to the lake, and we're fortunate that Duke Energy built an eight-tenths of a mile road into the property for us. And of course, they built that in to help us do something with the land about eight years before they had to do something, which will be a deep-water boat launch that's at the end of the county park road. Because that's in, we also were fortunate in that Rutherford Electric moved Electric Underground Power down that road as well in hopes that somebody would come and do a venture and take advantage that there was power and a road into the property. So we do not have public water on the property, so anything that happens out there would have to be done by way of wells and that type of thing. But what we're proposing now is we have George Milner, and George is here today, and he lives at the lake, and he is a businessman and a venturist. And Isaac Hoff, Isaac has lived at the lake his whole life. You might know his dad, Greg Hoff. Greg's here. And so these people have a real love for Lake James. And we've been in discussions, it's been over a year, right, since we've been talking? I think a whole year.
It has been a year now.
Yeah, yeah. So it's been over a year.
About four.
Yeah, about four years we've been looking for a partner. So what you have today is our proposal. The proposal is really two-phased. The first phase is a public-private partnership for the wedding and conference venue at the park. The second phase would be for yurts and treehouses and cabins that would also be in that same area that would support this venue. So they would really support each other. And the investments are quite large. I believe to do both of those projects, it'll probably turn out to be around $10 million when it's said and done. The first phase, which is the wedding venue and the conference venue, is about $4.5 million. And at this point, that's an estimate until further studies are done to show exactly what it would do. So what it would bring to the county is the venue would, will be utilized for weddings, conferences, retreats, music, and art festivals, and they can also host family gatherings. I'm going to repeat that again. The venue can be used for weddings, and that's a big deal in itself. Bringing conferences out to the lake is a big deal. It can be used for retreats, music, and art festivals. And so it can serve as a center. We see it serving as a catalyst to future economic development and tourism that will help build the Fontiflora brand that we've been working on for what's seven years now, right? And quite successfully. So the project itself, the property, let me start over here. One second, please. So originally, the property that was going to be utilized in the discussions for what we're trying to solve now was for a lodge to be built. And that lodge was going to be directly across the lake on what is Longarm. So there was a withholding when the state park was originally built, and they had put 125 acres and left it out of the state park in the hopes that somebody would come in and do a lodge. And the lodge would be utilized for conferences and weddings and the other things that I just listed. Well, when you get onto the property where this was set out, it was set out without any real studies or anything being done, and the terrain out there turned out to be more mountainous than foothill-like, and the cost would have been prohibitive. So nobody ever came to the table. So the state parks wound up purchasing that inhold of, gosh, I can't remember when they closed on it, just within the last couple of years. So the location we're talking about happens to be directly across the lake from where that inholding was, but we have advantages. And the advantage is we have a road going in to the property. We have great views. We can build access. We have electricity there, and we just drilled a well out there for a bathroom, so we know about how deep they're going to have to go for water, which is probably going to be around 250 feet. And so we think that this site is a much better thing. There's not anywhere on Lake James, I don't believe, that you're going to find that you're going to be able to repeat this venture. The land is not there. It's tied up in state parks, federal, or it's already, you know, conserved or it's built upon. And so if the venue, this venue doesn't work out, there may not be another possibility for it to work out in the future. I spent a lot of time at the lake in looking as we try to develop that as an economic engine for Burke County, and I really believe that to be true. We believe the county now has an opportunity, though, to enter into an agreement with a partner that does have the enthusiasm. They have the financial backing. They also have the passion to make this a world-class, pardon me, destination venue at Lake James. We see this as competing with Atlanta and Charlotte and Raleigh and Asheville and other significant tourist destinations that are in the region. We think that it has that type of high quality because when you're up there on the location, you'll be able to see the Black Mountains. You'll be able to see all the state parks. You can see the lake. You can see the south mountains. You can see Short Off, and it's just, you know, simply a beautiful place to be and to look around, and it's the type of destination that people are looking. But because when you wind up with a destination like that, you know, it is hard to build it, and it is expensive. I don't think you could do a project that's of good quality for less than the proposal that's before you today that can compete and draw in people from the markets that I just mentioned from the other metropolitan areas because people are looking for something special. So I'm going to go over just quickly now some of the basics of what the agreement is proposed, okay? So what is expected is that there is, that we would construct a 200-to-300-person wedding, conference, retreat venue, and that we would construct the Eagles Nest structure and that it would be accessible separately from the main venue structure. So the Eagles Nest structure, I used to talk about a lot, and I've talked about it for years, that it would be nice to have a platform out there that people could go to and view a 360-degree view of the area. But now's an opportunity to actually tie it in to this venture, but we would leave it separate so that it could still be accessed when this venue is not being utilized. The partners have the first option to investigate building multiple cabins, treehouses, and/or yurts on the adjoining county-owned land. This would be subject to a separate agreement at a later date. As far as the ground lease terms that they're looking for, it would be a 30-year lease with four five-year options to renew. They're also looking for 25-plus-or-minus acres of land that may be needed for the septic system. So we're not sure about how much land is going to be needed for the septic system. There was an analysis done, a preliminary analysis of the requirements, and when you do a drip system, it was very substantial, and it took up a lot of land, and you would have to run, gosh, like miles of line that would drip. The reason that it's so expensive is because part of this proposal would be not to just put in a prep kitchen, you know, where you just do very minor things, but that it would be a full commercial kitchen. When you put in the full commercial kitchen as well as the bathrooms, then the needs go up. So my guess is, is that we'd want to look again at the type of system and hope that a regular septic system could be put in place because it would require less money and take up much less land in order to function. They would also like for the county to offer a 50% tax reduction incentive on infrastructure and building for eight years. There is no, there are no taxes on the land itself because the county owns the land. And oftentimes, when the businesses come in or industry, we forgive half the tax for a certain amount of time because we don't know how fast this will get up and going and money generated and coming back. We would like for that amount of time to be as long as you find gentlemen can stomach. So the county would benefit by receiving tax revenues from the improvements. We estimate that that would be around $21,000 a year. Land is not, and I just said that, that the lease would be transferable to a third party. As far as the county responsibilities go, they're looking that the county provide road access down Eagles Nest Way between North Carolina 126 and Venue Drive. And so that is already in place because Duke Energy came in and already built the road. Provide underground power between North Carolina 126 and Venue Drive. That underground power is already in place. They would also like for us to provide a 180-parking space lot at stubout of Eagles Nest Way. So you know where that is if you've been down there. Right before the pavement ends, on the left is a stubout that was meant to access areas in the future down there. So we would also utilize the parking space for other things, and we would use it for a bus trailhead. I know that we had had a discussion about the trailhead at Fontiflora at 126 and adding bus spaces, but as we've done the design, it just doesn't work out for buses to be put there. There's not room because the radius of turn that the buses require would take up everything between that bathroom and that we put in and 126 essentially, and then there'd be no room for anything else to take place there. So we think it's easier to incorporate bus parking into this facility when it's built and that it could also serve as a trailhead for bigger other events as well. The partners would also like to ask that we build a 1,500-foot drive to the venue off of Eagles Nest Way and that we provide site location and 25 acres for the venue, depending on what is worked out from future studies. Now, what, how does the county benefit from this? Well, we can expect at least 12,000-plus-or-minus clients annually for the weddings and the conferences and the retreats. We expect 70% will come from outside of Burke County and will spend at least $100 to $150 a day, which would be $8.4 to $12.5 million. Additionally, we'll have weekday events that are cost-competitive to the Morganton Community House to encourage local utilization, and there'll be plans for music and art festivals and cooking classes during the summer to draw additional utilization. We believe that what this does, it'll continue to build the Fontiflora brand. It'll bring people to Burke County. It should help spur additional development in the area as people discover us. Pardon me. And that's my presentation, gentlemen. And now Isaac will do a short presentation as well.
All right. All right, got my red lights on. Yeah, so I have a lot of, about 14 slides to go over, and it'll give you a little better visual of our idea of what we've designed and come up with for this location. Again, my name's Isaac, and I've, I am a Burke County native, been here all my life with the little exception of college and some travel. Excited to be here with you guys today. Let me make sure I can get this. Do I got to point it that way? All right. And as Scott mentioned, the county's been searching for this partnership for quite a few years, and I am excited and proud to be here and bringing to the table a major component to be able to make this opportunity happen. And what I want to discuss today with the slides that I have is take a quick look, overview of the opportunity that we have, run through the design and the sheets that I sent out. It's a little bigger picture, and it'll also be on the screen. Go through what we have, what is still needed, and Scott just hit on that. And also just look at some reasons why it's a good idea. And the goal that we're looking for today is to receive support from the county and find a way to fund the necessary infrastructure that's still needed to make the venue happen. Oh, going too fast. First, I just want to take a look at the opportunity that we have here. The major component of, or the, I guess our starting point of why we're all here is the county has had the foresight to set aside this land for a unique opportunity as a venue. And we also have, the other major component that we've been looking for for maybe approximately 15 years is somebody who shares the same passion that the county does and is willing to invest money in the project. And Mr. Milner has come to the table with us to help make this happen. And the land in itself is, I don't know if all of you have been up there, but it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful piece of land and unmatched. It really has the potential to be a magnet and draw people from quite far away. I don't have to point backwards. Present to you "The Nest: Lakeside Venue." It's designed to be a state-of-the-art venue. It will attract conferences, fundraisers, retreats, weddings, musics, and music events. It's a multi-level building, designed to have a full commercial kitchen outfitted for professional business conferences, elegant enough for world-class weddings, and quaint enough for small gatherings. And it's, we've gone through quite a few drawings before we got here, and we're all really excited about what we've come up with here. It really accomplishes all of our goals that we've looked for in a building on this site. This is the, actually, I will turn around now. This is the front and north side view. In the front, this is the front right here, looking at the point of the peninsula, looking directly at the state park. And a few slides, I have the picture of what the front building will be looking at. Here's the side view of the front, the guest drop-off, the balcony up top, and the covered area in the front. Oh, and also this side right here is going to be, there's going to be a bar right there. You'll see the next slide. And this whole area is going to be looking out or up the mouth of the Limble Gorge. Spectacular view. Rear south side view. I was told if I press the wrong button, the show stops, so I'm being very careful. So here's the rear view where the guest drop-off. The south side view is going to be looking up the Limble Cove, then again, the front covered area and the drop-off. And a big focus in the design of the building was a lot of the glass, and so when you're inside, your focus is automatically outside towards the lake and really capture the beauty of the land that we have. And all these pictures are also on this handout that I gave you. If that's easier to see, you can also take those with you later. This is the first floor layout, the guest drop-off lobby, coat room, bridal room, can be used for other things because we did consult with some wedding professionals, and they said that was important. Restrooms, full bar. This is where the full commercial kitchen is, prep kitchen, and grand ballroom. Addition to the seats here, there's options to seat outside in a covered area on the front patio and then also patio on the side. Upper level. Here's the elevator, two sets of stairs, one here and one here. Again, the restrooms, a bar, then a potential prep kitchen. The upstairs is going to have both covered outside seating and then also uncovered decking out here. This area right here, the second floor on the deck, is going to be some of the more spectacular views of the lake anywhere you go, you go on the lake, even on ground level where you are now with the trees. It's quite amazing. And this right here is going to be photos. Photos will be all around the United States, taken from right there. This is the picture I was just talking about. This is sitting, this was taken about approximately where the front of the venue is going to sit and taken approximately just right after the winter, Equinox. So the sign in the middle of winter is going to be sitting right in front, and then summertime is going to be sitting right over here, right over the mouth where the Limble River comes in. We had to do a bit of clearing to get this picture, but as you can see, it's a beautiful All right, just a quick review of, I guess, what I see as what we have now. And like I just mentioned ago, one of the most important parts is that we have a county with this vision that is dedicated to this land. It's something spectacular. And the next thing we have, we also have this land, which was absolutely amazing as we've looked at and the fiction discussed. The land also has some challenges. It is steep. There's steep topography. The road access is challenging, and there's currently no infrastructure there. But these are all challenges that, you know, can be worked with. The next thing we have is we do have a local investor who does share this vision for this venue with the county. Mr. Milner currently has the $4 million of funds that he's willing to invest in this building for us and for the county to make this happen. And more importantly, just this is the rest of, he's also excited to support the county and have create efforts to make it a better place. We have done quite a bit of footwork over the last year that we've been discussing this and working on it. One of the steps is we did clear the site before, when we first started talking. You, we went up there. I took the architect that's been working with us, and you couldn't see anything. So we did some site clearing so we could see the land and the potential in the sites and the best way to position the building on the land. We've worked with Equinox Planning, a design firm to create the layout. We've done some preliminary site work for the septic. We've also worked with Stout Studio, who has worked with us creating the actual footprint and the design of the building. We've consulted with local event professionals, worked with fire chief, county building inspectors, and today have already invested approximately $40,000 of private money to get to the point to where we are today. And as Scott, I think Scott did a pretty good job of saying what is still needed. Like I say, we have made a big step in getting funding for the building, but there's still a little more that's necessary to be able to make this project happen. So yeah, so I think we got that one covered pretty well. And this is a fun one. So there is a lot more potential. I'm going to turn around for this one, too. There is a lot more potential here than just a event venue. Here's a big map. Here's the existing road. The paved road currently comes down to here. This is the spur-off that Scott was talking about earlier. I swear my hand's not that shaky. This is the site for the venue. The road that is currently needed for the venue would be from the spur-off up to the ridgeline. But additionally, the future potential that this venue has to be a catalyst for is a whole retreat peninsula, really, I mean, almost a resort. And you see the dots here. We've already gone through and set some preliminary places of where cabins, cabin rentals could go. of where cabins, cabin rentals could go. According to the fire chief, we have the ability to put thirty vacation rentals in there. And then also on the other side, which is the Burke County land, could be additional.
Duke Energy lease one.
Oh, Duke Energy lease land, okay. What we have gone in here is a smaller parking lot that would host the cars for the cabin rentals. There is some beaches here that are, could be quite spectacular if they were cleaned up. There's two small ones here, almost private. This land all around the venue is very steep, which is good, because when you're on top, you have an amazing view. Also, a little challenging to get all three hundred guests for the venue up there when they do arrive, and rework for that as well. And of course, the program that Duke Energy will be installing. So there's a lot of potential here on this peninsula, and it's exciting to see that we have the opportunity to get this in motion. And so the why, why is this a good idea? And we've been tossing this around, especially Mr. Milner and I, why is this a good idea? Why should this happen? And when looking at the ROI sheets, the return on this venue alone, just this building, it's not that impressive. It's not numbers that the county or Mr. Milner and myself are going to be making tremendous amount of money on. And for the investor, I'm guessing this is a good reason why, you know, it's been, this has been a concept for maybe fifteen years, and this is the first time we've had an investor that I'm aware of. And I guess we are lucky that we do have an investor who's willing to help the county reach this, even when the money that is brought to the table could make, have a much higher significant return in another city. And for Burke County, the question could be, why would this, should this be considered if the money isn't going to generate a ton of money? And besides the benefits that are listed up there and Scott has discussed, the venue's going to have a strong positive financial impact on the county, and it's going to serve as a catalyst investment that will fulfill a long-time need for an event venue and feed the future of this area around the lake. Just as we are looking at that past slide, just having the venue there, the cabins are going to help the venue, and the venue's going to help the cabins, and it has the potential to spur off a lot more from there. Yurts and camping and RV camping is really exciting that that could all happen there. So yeah, so I'm excited to present to you today, and that wraps up what I have for the slides. And I guess we can open it up now for questions.
Who's going to, if you build this, one of the cabins is going to be built, and how do you figure who's going to do the cabins? Is that another investor or what?
Well, that, and the goal is for us to do the cabins as well. We definitely won't want first options on that, because it, you know, will, like you just said, they're going to be a drastic complement for each other. And as far as the timeline, that's, the sooner the better.
One will support the other.
Yeah. So. George, how quick can we get some thirty treehouses there?
I'll be interested in whether you can pitch anything on the cabins. We backed away from the cabins just because of resources, not money-wise, but resources.
Scott?
They're 24/7. I'm a George, just a man. Scott, just go ahead and bring George up, so he can get that microphone.
I'll be quiet.
I need you at the microphone, that's how we need to score.
Yeah. Clark?
You can sit here as well.
Yeah, we can all sit here.
Here's the microphone. I don't think we have a timing on the cabins. We looked at that first and didn't like the economics that they carried by themselves. And so I'm a little more familiar, a little more comfortable doing a venue like this than putting thirty cabins in there. That's another $3 million of improvements, plus the infrastructure needed to take those cabins, plus somebody out there 24/7.
So, but you're planning in the future to do the cabins yourselves?
We think there's synergy between the cabins and the venue for sure, and there's more return to go ahead and do the cabins than it is either one by themselves. And we've got local wedding planners in to talk through this thing, and look at the plan, and they also say the same thing. It's kind of a common sense.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, a couple general questions to Scott, if I may. Scott, how close is this to the land that, when we made the settlement with Duke Power, what was that, 2004, about to watery?
So this is on that land?
It's on the land that they gave us for that.
Right. Crescent Resources gave us 135 acres of land, and that's...
Well, do we have a contract of, conflict of statement in there? Because at the beginning, I said, it said the land belonged to the state. Does it belong to the state, or does it belong to Burke County?
I'm not sure of a reference to the state on this land. This is county land. This is part of Fontiflora County Park land.
Yeah.
And it's at the end of the road there.
Well, what Duke Power gave to us was not given to the state, it was given to Burke County.
Oh, oh, no, sir. What we're talking about is the original idea for a lodge and a conference venue and wedding venue was across the lake, and then the state purchased that land, and so that option went away.
So we're not going to try to build a resort area on the lake, on the property that Duke Power gave to us?
Yes, yes, sir. As you walk that property, it's, it would be so costly.
We still do have the property, and this is not that property.
No, we don't have that property anymore. We don't have that property anymore. This is being proposed on the Burke County, Fontiflora County Park property.
Okay, all right. Another thing I called and wondered about, and I'm more comfortable with, is that at the beginning, we stated we needed, on page three, I believe it is, memo of understanding, and we have changed that through the process and through the presentation, a memo of intent.
A letter of intent.
And there's a, I don't know how strong, Gerald, that is in the court of law language. The thing that makes me ask that question is that a little bit later, we said all, A-L-L, everything was still subject to agreements or changes or approval. So that gave me a little bit of a legal question there. Which way is the right way? Which way do we need? Do we need memo of understanding or a memo of intent?
I think at this point, Commissioner Taylor, a letter of intent would be the best for the county, because it is non-binding on the county. So it simply states our intent to work with these folks under these terms.
Well, I thought memo of understanding was less binding than memo of intent, is that not correct?
One is more, the first one is more contractual in nature. A letter of intent simply expresses everyone's good feelings about going forward on these terms.
We feel the same way. A letter of intent's probably better, and we can paragraph it so that either one of us can walk away at any time.
So, Mr. Taylor, what you have is you have documents that were drafted at two different times, and at one time, we were talking MOU, but what we brought today, let me clarify exactly what we're asking for. We're asking to approve a conceptual agreement by way of a letter of intent for the Nest, and to instruct the county attorney to draft a formal lease and partnership agreement with the private partner's attorney for consideration by both parties.
Yeah.
Or we're asking for part of that.
Moving to another question, I had three or four questions on this, and we probably can answer it all at once. I had a question of, we had to build the road, and you're telling me the road has been built by Duke Power now?
So there's two roads. There's the road into the property, that's eight tenths of a mile long, then there's a 15 to 1800-foot spur road off of the main road that's already built in. So the road that's being mentioned in this is that spur road to the venue itself.
Okay. Then we've got to build the parking spaces. You've got that at 250K, you've got the road at 200,000, the power line, doing the power?
Power's in, so we just have to run it underground as the road's constructed to the site.
And we're looking at how much money?
I don't have an exact cost on any of these at this point, because you'd have to do engineering and design and survey. I have done survey, actually, on this corridor, so we do have a topo on this that was done earlier when we were looking at the county perhaps doing something, sorry.
Well, bullet number two on page four has listed that we would have 8.4 million dollars in business added, and that the comparison to that is, what do we get out of that 18, because most of the tax is going to go to your tourism people? So what do we really end up, what does this county end up with, with 8.4 million dollar income?
Well, that is the amount of income that would be generated by the venue, but a lot of that's paid out to other people. So it's not, I'll let George answer that, he might...
Well, the reason I'm asking these questions, you know, I love the idea, don't get wrong that my questions aren't having negative, they don't, because doing the math, we're going to get $100 a year rent.
Well, we'll also get property taxes on the investment, not the land, but the building itself.
Yeah.
And we'll also benefit from people coming to the county, once the venue has the treehouses and other things. Now, that money does generate a special tax that goes to support the Tourism Development Authority and the promotion of Burke County and the cities. So that's a big deal, because all these things start spinning off investment and things, and it becomes, you know, feasible. The other thing is, the amount that we're asking for is about $400,000. We're just estimating at this point, because we don't have the exact figures. Unlike a lot of projects that I see, that we would pay for, this one pays itself back. So it might take some time to do, but just through the property taxes, if nothing else, it would eventually pay itself back. But what we gain in tourism and other dollars spent, and people coming, seeing the lake, investing in other properties and stuff, it'll be multifold that. So I think this is an investment into, as we try to build that Fontiflora brand.
I just want to be prepared to answer assumed taxpayers' questions, that when you look at $100 a year for fifty years, that's $5,000.
I understand.
And the taxpayer, you know, we don't, I don't pay that, you don't pay that, the county managers don't pay that, chairman of commissioners don't pay that, taxpayers, comes out of the taxpayers' kiddy's. And to put out 500,000, I'm just going to say five, because I see it going beyond 500,000 and a half million, time you do all the water and paving, septic tanks and so forth, and parking places. And for fifty years, we are returned, other than the business that it generates, and that's good, I mean, that's healthy. But there's no figures on that, and I'd love to be able to say, and I can't say this without somebody giving me some documentation, we're going to get that $500,000 back, just in business generated the first year. Now, I can talk to people about that. I'm good at talking to people about that, but I think that, and the letter of intent, you know, by the time we get to the second phase of this, we ought to have all that information available, and it ought to be in hard numbers, even though all of it is a projection. We understand that. We project this is going to do this, this is what's going to return, and this is how long, et cetera, et cetera. It also says, and there's no number on the end of that, it's hard to do some of those numbers, that Burke County, this is on page eight, by the way, if you want to follow along, that we get 10% of the net profit, but we really don't get that. It's then put into a reserve, if you will, to maintain and apply to improvements, it's what your presentation says.
I have that marked for clarification myself, Mr. Maynard. I think that can go two ways. The 10% is supposed to come back to pay property taxes and other things, that's from net profit on the business. I think it's cleaner, and I have to ask our attorney and tax administrator just to have it as we receive the taxes on the land, instead of the way this is worded. I can read that. It's number eight, right? Burke County shall receive 10% of the net profit of the Nest. Said net profit shall be applied to the improvements, those, George, Isaac, are the improvements that the county puts in, we're talking about, right? Property tax, and any remaining balance shall be abated for the life of the lease.
There's several issues, obviously, there's still a gap between what Scott's proposed, like most deals, they got one in the spectrum, I got a different perspective.
Well, it's a whole, it's a whole intent of the letter of intent.
Right.
It's going to get started, and I understand that, but in the same process, please provide me with this other information by the time we get to say, okay, we're going to commit our dollars today, so here's what I can count on getting. Another item I wanted to ask you about is the view stand or platform? What's that going to entail, and what's the cost of net? Who is responsible for that, Burke County?
Burke County probably will be responsible for that, so it depends on how we want to incorporate it. So I don't think at this point, in the letter of intent, we know the answer to that. We do know that we want a viewing platform up on that location that's accessible by the citizens anytime that a venue is not going on, but that has separate entrance and availability from the venue itself. And so we've talked about a couple of designs, but we need an architect to really show us how that can work on the site and how that can be done.
Well, that's the reason that's important, because I'm sitting here, and I'm thinking, it's going to be like Old Faithful. It's going to have a thing to put 50 cents in, and you get three minutes of viewing time on this.
This will be a thing that you go into, and you can look around 360 degrees and see everything at the lake and...
But no viewing, no magnifying? But no viewing, no magnifying?
Not at this time. We might put some big eyes up there. I don't know.
I think if we did it right, it'd pay for itself. You know, that's me, so. Let's see. I think that's it, generally speaking, just trying to get a picture of the total commitment from this group and being able to get the answers to answer questions if we could ask those questions. I think it's something that Wayne and I were commissioners when that thing, that whole thing developed and we had a couple of years to get that ironed out. And Duke Power was very generous and gave us a lot of stuff through that settlement. And it's nice to see some of it that we dreamed about fifteen years ago, Wayne coming to be, so. Those questions, those answers helps me and I appreciate it. I think that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to make one observation. That is, in my mind, and the way some of these numbers came out, in my mind, is, and you do these deals all over the place where somebody has the building, somebody's got the dirt. It has a ground lease kind of situation. That's not an uncommon commercial relationship. So, the county is going to addy up twenty-five acres. I don't know what your opportunity cost associated with that twenty-five acres is. It is an ugly piece of ground to build on. It's an ugly piece of ground to get to, but it is a beautiful place when you get there. So, you're adding up, I don't know what the value is on that land, twenty-five acres. And I'm going to addy up four plus or minus million. You're going to get the return from a sales tax associated with the income that's generated from that deal. And I hopefully will make some money on the revenue that that property generates. So, it's a partnership, each having their own stream of income flows into that, into that partnership.
Mr. Chairman, in response to that, you're absolutely correct. I have land that they taxed me heavy on and when they come and look at it, you know, it's watershed. You can't build on it. It holds the ground together and it's good to look.
I'm going to run goats on this land, you know what I'm saying?
However, from Burke County's position, from my position, is that you're receiving a very, very nominal thing.
Absolutely.
Some of those prestigious costly property Burke County has to offer. Now, we could have a lot of discussion and I would not be the one that could answer the question of what the actual value per acre of that land would be.
Right.
You know, it would probably be more than I'm given, it's probably more than you think. So, I'd just leave it at that.
It's not what I'm putting into it, though.
Yeah.
No, but...
It's not for me.
It's over a million.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
Because the value of the land that was given to us, gifted to the Burke County from Crescent, was a two million dollar piece of property with no improvements and no road in. And then there was, there's been about a million dollars invested since then, or there has been.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Britt?
There's two things. Isaac, where you show on the topo where the building's going, where would the parking be for that?
The parking for the venue?
Yes.
Is here. And the venue is here. Which is a, is a challenge. We do have some potential solutions for it.
Are you showing it there?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, more than likely, there'd be a design to where buses are...
Shuttle system.
Shuttleing up and dropping off and coming back to the main parking thing. We also talked about there should be a walking path from the parking area to the venue as well. People want to walk to it.
Any thought about trying to expand that turnaround to some actual parking? Or is it just, is the topography just absolutely not possible to do it?
A little bit of parking.
It's a little bit, you just said, that thing's just too steep.
A few staff and a few key people for the event is probably about what you get at the top.
We looked at this before it was ever turned over to us, actually, from Crescent, this exact site for doing a venue that the county actually paid for, for weddings and things. And I think we found that only eight maximum could be put in at the location itself. It's very steep and challenging.
And you really think shuttling is a practical and reasonable approach?
Yeah. Well, there's, we discussed a couple of different scenarios. And one scenario is to have, to the driveway to come up and loop around and so cars can come up and flow. It's not like you come up and turn around and it's the traffic jam. And so, it could be a combination of, if you're coming with a group of four in your vehicle, you can drop off three and then the driver, the drivers only would have to shuttle. Another option is to have valet parking or maybe a combination of them. And one component that we've looked at is a electric car or electric shuttle that can hold up to about twenty-three people. And having two of those going back and forth would be able to shuttle the people that are necessary coming in and out.
Okay. And then just to further elaborate on Commissioner Taylor's comments, I think from my perspective as commissioner, if we're going to bring taxpayer dollars to the table, I need to be able to see how I can explain to the taxpayer, you know, here's how we get your money back. And so, going forward, that's one of the things that I will be looking for.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Other questions or comments? Just can I manage anything?
Well, gentlemen, first, I apologize. I was out a good bit in December for personal reasons. I think myself and Margaret both were out a good bit, unfortunately. If the board is interested in exploring this, I think Margaret and I and the county attorney and Scott can work to refine this a little bit better and try to clear up some of these numbers for us to give you a little better perspective of what we may be biting off if the county was to go forward with the actual project. But again, I'm sorry that things happen in life.
Scott talked to us about timeline of what we're expecting, what George and Isaac are expecting from the county and what we're expected to do. I need a little bit of perspective of where we're at because we're getting ready to start budget season. And it's imperative that we know how to funnel this into the budget if necessary.
So, I believe that the investors, George can't sit on his money indefinitely. As you know, it needs to be reinvested or something like that eventually. But we're hoping that something will happen in the spring to move forward. So, we'd like an agreement as soon as practical. I apologize that you haven't seen much of it before now, but we were not in a position to really come to you with any details that would have been helpful. There were so many things that were up in the air and so many questions that we're just now getting to the point where we can narrow it down to even have a good conversation about, is this something that we want to move forward with? And I think the neat thing is, is that when we were gifted the land by Crescent, this is exactly the type of thing that the county and Crescent and all the people that fought so hard for that agreement were after. And so, there's been a lot of investment already. And I understand that you don't want to, you know, throw good money out there that won't be beneficial to Burke County because we're good stewards. So, my answer, and George correct me, Isaac, if I'm wrong, is we'd like a final agreement by the spring, right?
Yeah. I can't really proceed because the next step is doing detailed plans. That's probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollar. We've got some money in this already. So, I need to make sure we've got a good, sound understanding for both of us before we pull that trigger and launch detailed designs from a county or et cetera.
Anything, JR?
One of the things that I note from the proposed letter of intent is that Burke County has the obligation to purchase this at the end of the lease, at fair market value or at appraised value. That's...
Good or bad?
Well, I don't know if you want to purchase something after thirty years of use.
I think, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I think the key word there is the opportunity. We do not have to purchase.
No, the, it says Burke County, the obligation to purchase, so.
So, whoever's on the board in thirty years feels like it's a good deal. It'll be up to them to make that choice, so.
Right.
And it's fifty years, so none of us at this table would. Maybe Isaac. I hope to be around.
We're making big decisions, then.
So, James Reed, let me back up. You're saying we're obligated to buy it after fifty years?
We're obligated to buy it at the termination of the lease. So, if they choose not to do their four or five-year renewals whenever they are through with it, we have the obligation to purchase it.
Tell me where that is, what they are.
In the letter of intent, that is number eleven or A-11.
Well, we can work on wordsmith than that, attorneys, again, right?
The other long-term obligation is that you're required to maintain the road and maintain the parking. So, that's a thirty to fifty-year obligation, just wanted to point out.
Maintain the road or maintain the spur?
Maintain the fifteen hundred foot road extension.
Spur up to the, okay.
Well, I'm probably looking at page eight where it says, we're to receive ten percent of the net profit and that laid aside or applied to improvement, that that was intended for that. Am I reading that into, is that incorrect?
Well, I'm pretty confused about that number eight myself. Because if we're to get ten percent of the next, of the net profit, but then the next sentence goes on to say that the net profit will be applied to the builders or the developers' property taxes. So, it doesn't sound like we get anything there. And if, if there's more than the, than the property taxes, then that is abated. So, we...
Well, that's, that's an excellent point and should be resolved before we finish with the letter of intent.
Scott, one question I had, you're talking about twenty-five acres for septic?
It could be less, depending on the final design. It could be significantly less.
Is that in addition to the twenty-five acres for the location or?
I think that that's probably sufficient for the whole thing, for the whole venue.
So, the whole, so the whole venue and the septic would be?
Yes, sir. But we're really looking at a different type of system since we've gotten a guesstimation that that system is going to be probably a million dollars or more. One of the things that hurts us out there on the land and as, through the years as I've gotten guesstimations and talked to environmental health and others, is the remoteness and the size of the system to accommodate multi-units or something of commercial nature. So, it's not the same as a house where I throw in a five thousand dollar septic tank. It's a lot different and much more expensive.
Pick of a drain field.
What's that?
Pick of a drain field.
It is. It's a, the process to make it environmentally friendly and drip is a, quite a process and a very expensive process.
Scott, would the, when we build a septic system, would that include what we're going to have for the cabin someday? Or will that be another system?
That would be another system that would have to be looked at and approved. They have cited areas where that system can go in already because originally we were looking at cabins when we were first having discussions.
Mr. Chairman, Scott, you might need to keep in mind after you, you'll have to do soil testing on that. It might be better with two or three smaller systems just because of the soil absorption of a septic tank, so.
And we've already done soil analysis on the site they have.
Thompson, Thompson Engineering.
Yes.
Jeff, do you have another question?
So, JR, should it be our approach at this point to try to work out the details of this letter intent, of intent? Or are we just at a point that, that we, we need to agree that, yes, we want to move forward or no, we don't? And then, then from there, we work on the, some kind of agreement? Where are we here, I guess, is my question?
Well, I would say the letter of intent needs a little work. And I think between Scott and Margaret, they can probably say, you know, is this paving of the parking lot a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project? Is it, is the road a two hundred thousand dollar project? What's the cost of putting in the electricity? What's the cost of building the viewing stand? What's the anticipated cost of maintenance? And give the county an idea of exactly what it, what it will be investing. And then we can put that into the letter of intent and have something I think both parties can go forward on.
So, then from there, once we've done that, we've still got a jump-off point later if we decide, hey, this is, we can't go there.
Well, the letter of intent's non-binding, so either party can, can say, whoa, we don't want to go forward.
So, give me one more point of clarification. We do, if we vote to do a letter of intent today, can, do we still have to vote to go ahead and do the lease and the formal partnership agreement? Or can we vote to go ahead? Because I think we're comfortable with the project and we want to do a letter of intent. And then after the letter of intent with some information that needs to come back to the board and some, some things in that letter of intent that we think need to be changed, then can we come back and do the lease and formal partnership? Or does that have to be done at one time today?
No, I think you can, you can vote to go forward with the letter of intent setting forth, you know, the things we agree on. I would want to make some, I wouldn't want you to sign this one. I would, I would want to...
Yes.
To make some additions there, too. Then I think you can instruct us to go ahead and work on the lease. And, you know, that's where all the nuts and bolts are going to be, you know, put in. Who's responsible for this, who's responsible for that? And, you know, by the time we have an agreement or a lease, then, then that will be something that, that will be the permanent, permanent document.
Mr. Chairman, I had in my questions and struck through it because on the letter of intent, I was going to ask, where's the money coming from? But that comes with the second phase of the agreement, so we don't need that in the letter of intent.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're rushing this letter of intent. I know it's non-binding or whatever, but for me, we're rushing something here that we shouldn't be rushing. There's a lot of unanswered questions here financially. If we're looking at this thing and we feel that we financially can do this, I just, you know, I just wonder with the projects we've had going on and what, whatever, what are we going to really get into? And I know that's not binding, but to me, it's just rushing, rushing something we shouldn't be rushing. I think we've got plenty of time for this.
I think we've got plenty of time for this, especially since he said, as long as we get it done in the spring.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just for clarification, be sure I understand the timeline. It sounded to me like what you guys needed was to be done and have an agreement by the spring, that the letter of intent would give you some satisfaction that, yeah, you ought to go ahead and spend your dollars trying to get to that point. Am I wrong about that?
That's right. I, I think what you find in this conversation, there's still a gap between what we would propose and what the county would propose. That gap's got to be closed before I go pull the trigger. Once that gap's closed and there's some sort of agreement to that, that purpose, I think we've got honorable people here, so I'm willing to pull the trigger and go. But we've got to close that gap and give you comfort through Margaret, et cetera, that you're getting the economics that you want out of the project.
So can, can you guys work on this, this letter of intent? And perhaps in the next weeks, we can arrive at an answer at least for that point of it, and then, then we see how it goes from there? Does that, does that seem reasonable? Wayne?
Yeah, I'm just not ready today. I mean, this has sprung on us today, and I don't like to rush things. And I know a letter of intent is what it is, but I still don't like to, there's, there's still a lot of questions in my mind of this whole project. And, you know, I think we're, we've got to dig deeper into this whole thing.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that's, that's what I was trying to convey earlier. I think we could probably draft and make the changes in the letter of intent and bring back to you by the, maybe February meeting. And then we would need, if we're instructed to go forward and develop in that letter of intent, I believe we're also going to be getting a lot closer to some numbers that we feel a little more secure with as far as what we're looking to spend, how we're looking to get revenue returned. And if the numbers don't work, we don't do the project. We ain't got to do anything. It'll be there 100 years from now. Somebody will come to us with a project that we can find acceptable. So I'm not painted into any corner anywhere. Again, I think we can do that by the February meeting.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make one. I thought the reason for the letter of intent was to show that, yeah, we want to do this project, but secondly, and it's not for us, that they're, they're going to spend about $150,000 getting this drawn up, sketched out, and an anticipating price. And I think that's the reason for the request this early for letter of intent. I had more questions than anybody, but I understand the process. If we, if we want a developer that's going to generate 8.4 million dollars a year of revenue, we, I, I think we, we're interested and we need to let them know that we're interested, I think. And I don't, don't bet on waiting a week or two, so, you know, it's what it is.
All right, gentlemen, here's where I think we're at. I don't think we're ready to vote on, on a motion today. Several things are, are in play here. I think we are going to instruct you, JR, and work with the attorneys for Georgia's side as quickly as possible with a new letter of intent with, with those things that were brought up today. Scott, I'm going to direct you to work with these two gentlemen. I want to see some more numbers. Thirdly, my vice chair is not here today, and we're talking too much money to have one vote not present today, and I apologize for that. He's just not here. So I, I think the five of us need to be here because the money, this is a, one of the best investments that we're probably going to have in Burke County in a long, long time. And I want it to be right when we're, we're able to do that. So I, I'm going to instruct you, JR, to do that with the attorneys, and let's get the letter of intent. Give me some more clarity on numbers as, as well as you folks can, because I know these are a lot of ifs, ands, buts, and maybes. So give us the numbers as well as you can. Scott will be back by then, and I think we'll be able to move forward, but I don't think we're ready to, to do any voting today on anything. There's just not good, enough information. There's good information, but not enough good information today for us to do anything. Does anybody disagree with that? If so, speak for please now. I, I don't think we're able to set a date because I don't know how quickly you attorneys can work together, so I'm not going to set a date for this as soon as you find out. And let's do this as quickly, let's just do it expeditiously, and then we'll get it back on, on here to do something as quickly as we can. All right? Okay. Is there anything else to come for us today? All right, before we adjourn, I want to mention a couple of little things. Save these dates if you would. February the 20th and the 21st is when we as commissioners are going down a new path. We're going to be doing a budget retreat. That retreat will be in Blowing Rock, North Carolina. Please put that on your calendars, commissioners, and if you have a problem with those two dates, please let me know as quickly as possible. That will be when we start our budget retreat. And then March the 31st, the evening of March the 31st, NCACC, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, we will be hosting the district meeting here at Foothills Higher Education Center on that date. Anybody have anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We stand adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.